This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
...
Tony Denham, here. Salem Derby, Omar Gomez, JP Kozinski, Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
JT Terrell. Owen Zera.
Here.
So the place of allegiance is on the side. The place of allegiance. Thank you. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of August 7.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 7. Any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara.
Tony Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Epstein.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Epstein.
Motion passes. Police speak time. This is the opportunity to address the council regarding any topic not listed on the public hearing. If you are here to talk in favor or against any of the resolution, now is the time to do it because it's not a public hearing or anything else. We are not allowed to answer by open meeting law. So I will give you three minutes. Can you please state your name and address for the record and just please talk to the council? You can go to the podium. You have to go to the podium.
Good to see you. Hi, my name is Steve Donnelly. I live in 6 Pine Brook Drive, East Hampton. I'm a member of the Manhan Rail Trail Committee and also a member of the Norwadic Network, which is a group that is dedicated to seeing the expansion and the completion of the Mass Central Rail Trail, which goes from Northampton to Boston or will eventually. Right now, it's in a situation where roughly, it's a little over 100 miles and close to half that have been paved already. And now we are working to try to prod the state, to get more active, to help the local groups and stuff make the connections to complete the trail. And the reason I'm coming here is because we connect to that rail trail. So these proclamations that we're trying to get from all the cities are along, all the cities along the trail plus any that connect to the trail, which would be us, showing support. We plan to get all of those petitions together online, present them to the state as one more inducement to get them to spend more time and energy and money to get this project done. That's pretty, and the other thing is the Manhan Rail Trail Committee supports this move.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Nancy Stenberg. I live at 17 Main Avenue in East Hampton. I am here to speak in favor of the yes-on-two resolution. We have a number of reasons why we are doing this, but I'm going to talk about the harm in having MCAS testing tied to graduation requirement. We are one of only eight states left of the nation that do this. After any student goes through, you know, at least 12 years of education, they should be judged on those 12 years of education and not on a test. So of particular notice in harm for our students are our students of color and our students with special needs. So denying diplomas, it hurts the quality of our education because I can speak from experience being a public school educator. Around February or so, we like stop everything and start teaching to this test. So we want to stop that, bring the joy back to education. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Walverde. I'm here to represent the Lathrop community in favor of our proposal for $33,000 to remove invasives on...
That's going to be part of the public hearing.
Okay, so I should wait till later.
You can wait for, yeah.
Thank you.
You can wait for that, yeah.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sarah Woodard, 24 Sheldon Avenue, East Hampton. So I'm also here to support question number two, and I'm speaking to you as a special education teacher. I'm a reading specialist and I have experienced many students who have not been able to pass this test because one test should not be the judge of whether you get a diploma or not. Many students are very bright in other ways and a test should not determine. And as Nancy also stated, we are one of the tougher states in the United States around this requirement. And I feel very passionately that this requirement for graduation should be taken off. You know, the opposition talks about what will we do instead? There are many ways we can assess students. We can do portfolios. We can do other things, but one test to determine. Many of my students, they have testing anxiety. They're not good test takers. And these are really smart kids. I work with a lot of learning disabled kids. I myself was not a good test taker. I grew up in New York City. I was able to pass the regions. Not sure I could pass the MCAS, and I think I'm a pretty smart person. So respectfully, I'm hoping that you will support this. I think as a resident of East Hampton, someone who door knocked for public schools, and I care very passionately about education, really appreciate your support on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marcey LeMenthall. I'm at 25 Sheldon Avenue, East Hampton. I'm speaking as a parent and also as a mental health provider. I work with a lot of kids with clinical anxiety and see the damage done by the MCAS. It can be very, very significant. And I personally am a parent of a pretty intellectual kiddo, sometimes who's too intense about school. She has a pretty significantly high GPA, and I only raised that because in spite of that, she crumbles around these exams and it just tanks her. So I've seen it personally in my home. I've seen it in the kids that I serve. And I'm here to ask for support for question two. I think it's really damaging for the kids that we have in the state. Thanks for hearing it.
Thank you.
Hi, council members. My name is Nora Delacour, 31 McKinley Avenue, East Hampton. And I write about education issues, but I used to be a teacher here in Massachusetts. And just a little bit of background about this, as Nancy said, you know, as of 2014, about half of all US states had policies on the books like we do now that made graduation contingent upon standardized test scores. But as the research piled up showing that punishing young people for their standardized test scores is not helping them thrive and in fact is doing really serious harm. State after state after state got rid of these policies, so now we are in a minority. And I just want to paint a little picture of like what the harm can look like. So I taught at one point in Springfield at an alternative public high school for students with exceptional learning needs. So we had students dealing with a lot of adversity, challenges outside of school, things that made it really hard for them to focus in school. And, you know, so it was a really challenging learning environment. And yet I had this one student in my senior English class who just was this shining star. Like somehow he was able to marshal the focus to like thoughtfully engage with each and every aspect of every assignment. So he was a straight A student in spite of like constant disruptions. And so when we heard in the spring of 2018 that this kid was going to be our valedictorian, the whole staff was just overjoyed for him because you really could not imagine a young person who deserved the honor more. And he had earned it, like by the books, by his transcript. His grades were far and away the best in the school. So then, you know, he was like beaming, overjoyed, can't wait to tell his mom. A couple days passed, I think, and then we get word from the district that, oh no, actually this young person can't be our valedictorian because he was one of the students whose disability just made it impossible for him to pass the 10th grade MCAS. Right? Like he met all of the requirements, but before him in high school, other than that, but he just wasn't going to be able to do well on this test. And so then the school was put in a position of having to strip him of this honor that he had earned and give it to someone else who was, you know, more like a C student, but who was able to pass the test, you know? And so because this was a small school, the entire student body watched this happen, like they witnessed this. And I think it sent a message to them all that like you should just give up because what is the point if you can work incredibly hard for your entire high school career and have it all undermined by a single test? So I'm sorry, I'm going on and on, but just one more thing I want to say that like lest anyone think that this graduation requirement is only harming like a handful of students who are in that student situation, right? I don't think that's the case. As you know, Nancy and Sarah both talked about like, we do have about 700 students in Massachusetts every year who are like that kid that I talked about. You know, they meet all of the requirements, but solely on the basis of MCAS, they're locked out of graduation and, you know, they're unable to pursue higher education. But then we also have all kinds of other students who fail the MCAS in 10th grade and simply drop out because they're getting the message that school is not going to be a place where they're able to succeed. They're not going to be allowed to succeed. And then there's all of the other students, the majority of our students in Massachusetts, who can pass the MCAS, but they're suffering from, you know, going to school day in and day out in a learning environment that is way overly focused on this one test, right? Because even whatever you think about the MCAS, it's just one test. And so when we attach these dangerous punishments to it, we really, it ceases to be like a valuable measure of learning and it becomes the entire goal of the learning process, right? And that's just not allowing our students to feel inspired and engaged. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else participate in remote? I guess not. I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Tony Denham.
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, so what we have, we have one CPA appropriation tonight. It's a supplemental appropriation of $33,051 transferred from the open space account within CPA to Lathrop invasive plant removal. I know there's somebody from Lathrop who would like to speak about this, but just very broadly, Lathrop controls a large parcel of land on the border between East Hampton and Northampton, as well as another large parcel of land in Northampton. They've been doing a good deal of work trying to remove invasive plants from their land, which does have a conservation restriction on it. And they're asking for support from the CPA to fund that work. What they're proposing is a three-year process with a budget of $100,000. The CPA committee opted to fund the first year of this and then we would discuss going forward, future years, what that'll look like. So the finance committee met last week to discuss this and voted 2-0 with one absence to approve this appropriation.
Thank you, Councilor Peak. Now I'm going to let you, before taking questions from the councilors, so that way can you give us like a summary similar to what you give us at the finance committee?
Yes.
To the rest of the council?
Yes, I can.
Can you please state your name?
Yes. I'm Barbara Walverde from the Lathrop community. I am joined here by Patrick Arguin, who is our CEO. And he is here to answer any questions about Lathrop. Our project, our project is a collaborative project between the town of East Hampton, town of Northampton, the Kestrel Land Trust, and Lathrop. It has a long history, as was mentioned, because we have been working to preserve pollinators, birds, and other wildlife on our land for more than 10 years. We have a total of 103 acres of conservation restricted land that Lathrop owns. 78 of those acres are in the town of East Hampton. And they abut protected land in Northampton, which is under a Northampton CR, and also they abut the Park Hill area, which as you know is a high priority for both towns for conservation. When we started this work 10 years ago, our land was starting to be invaded by alien plants which can take over a landscape and so smother and kill native plants that support our wildlife that in fact land that is dominated by alien invasive plants may lose up to 75% of its wildlife because it smothers the native plants that our wild creatures have evolved to be able to use. So Lathrop, which is a nonprofit governed by Quaker values, set out to follow our chief value of sustainability, of living lightly on the land, and to make our land a refuge for wildlife and a place that supports a healthy environment. So 10 years ago, we started removing some invasives and we have been working ever since. We have received several grants from the city of Northampton, none so far from the city of East Hampton because East Hampton was waiting for us to make good on a condition of our having been built years ago. We were supposed to put 75 acres into CR and it never happened. As far as I can tell, the city dropped the ball and Lathrop dropped the ball. So a couple years ago, we started to correct that. We put our 78 acres into CR. Now that is done. And here we are to say, we've already been doing a substantial amount of work here on this land and we want to continue that work. So that's the proposal. We know what we have because last year we had Land Stewardship, Inc. do an inventory and recommendations of our total CR land plus a few acres of additional land and tell us what invasives were present, and they list them, how dense they are, where they are, and what we should work on first. So we have an incredible inventory, which is attached to our proposal. And on the basis of that inventory and recommendations, we made a three-year plan. And we have come to the city of Northampton, which has funded us for the full three years for their share. And now we have asked East Hampton to fund us for three years and they have given us the first year with an eye towards the following years. So this project, the main purpose of this project is to protect wildlife. But we also lie over the Barnes-Aggraffar. And we also depend upon the contribution of Bassett Brook, which flows into the Manhan, which flows into the Connecticut. So this land is very valuable. We have a committee at Lathrop called the Land Committee, which has more than 30 resident members. These are seniors, but we get out there and we have worked ourselves to remove invasives. We have raised in those 10 years thousands of dollars to pay contractors and we have made considerable progress. But what our inventory showed us is that the progress that we have made is uneven. And so the purpose of this grant proposal is to bring all of these CR acres up to a high level of control of invasive plants so that you don't have some nicely controlled and then some over here where we didn't have the money to start or we started but we didn't have the money to follow up. We want to bring everything up so that in the future it will be much easier to control and to monitor. Any questions?
Any councilor have any questions? Councilor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. First thing I want to say is I had the pleasure of having dinner with a resident of Lathrop the other evening and their windows faced out into the conservation area and it was quite beautiful. The birds that were right there at the window, I was moved actually by the tranquility of the space. And it was just after we had had the finance meeting and so I remembered you talking and, you know, I want to acknowledge the love and dedication that you were putting towards this land to make sure that it is taken care of, right? And so I want to acknowledge that for you and everyone who is working on this, as well as the CEO who's here who clearly sees this as important, right, which is why you're here. And so I also want to acknowledge that I appreciate the collaboration, right? That you're working with not only the CPA, but Kestrel, Lathrop, et cetera. So you have all of these partners who are dedicated to this. And so I want to acknowledge that. I think that that's really tremendous work, that it's not just one small group, but you've actually pulled a community together to be able to say this is an issue, this is a problem, and this is not just about the property of Lathrop, but this is going to have impact for East Hampton, right? Because that's also wildlife that comes into East Hampton and so that's equally important. The question that I have, and I asked this the other evening, is the funds that East Hampton is providing, are those funds that are going to cover all of the project? Or are those the funds that are going to cover what is happening within kind of the boundaries of?
That's a good question. The funds that you are being asked to provide here in East Hampton will be used only for East Hampton CR land. The CR that is 78 acres on our East Hampton portion of our property with the CR held by the Kestrel Land Trust.
Thank you very much.
Any other councilor? Councilor Smith?
I'd like to make a couple comments as well, not so much a question. I really appreciated you talking about the number of residents who are involved in this project. Lathrop community is a hidden gem within East Hampton and it's one of the few properties that really address aging issues in a, you know what I'm saying? In one, not in a neighborhood setting, but rather in assisted living setting and apartments within that unit. So I really appreciate that on the first level. The second level I just want to say is that I think this is really important that speaks to the discussion that has been going on in East Hampton about development and CPA funds and what they're used for. And I think this is a really good example of CPA funds that are making sure that the historical integrity of this space remains the same. Also CPA funds are supposed to be used for our nature spaces and for recreation. And I think that when you're looking at any population that may have mobility issues, one of the things that Councilor Denham touched upon is that looking out the window and being able to see that particularly for residents who don't have mobility creates that much more importance to these funds being used for those resources. And I just wanted to mention that particularly as a gerontologist. I'm really excited to see that your private company is partnering with our neighboring city as well as East Hampton to protect the land. It's another example of these many layered projects that really are important.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Councilor Zera?
Just more of a quick comment. Well, I'd like to offer glowing support. I unfortunately have to recuse myself from this vote as I'm a board member and a butter and neighbor who does enjoy all the trails and the conservation land on a regular basis, but would love to say more, but I can't.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Councilor Kozinski?
Thank you. Great presentation. I think you covered a lot of the bases that helps us to understand and the public to understand the uses for the project. I just wanted to elaborate on a few pieces because in addition to saving the area from being invaded, maybe losing up to 75% of the native plants, it is over the Aggraffar and that has great value for all the city. I know you said that the funds would only be used in East Hampton. And my understanding is that these aren't the only funds and efforts that are being used to do this project. The Kestrel contributes funds and energy and that there may be other...
Lathrop itself is contributing, oh yes. And in fact, we have contributed, our resident committee raises its money from resident donations. We have contributed $25,000 to this project. That's a lot for us. And we are very happy to do it. In addition to that, the two residence councils, one from each campus, each contributed $1,000 from their budget, which are also acquired through resident donations. So yes, there is tremendous support here. And as you may know, the grant proposal includes as well volunteer time and staff time from Kestrel and from Lathrop to make this project go.
I think those are very important points for any expenditure funds from the CPA. And we love to see those types of resources go into a project that we can become part of that effort as opposed to funding the whole bird. Even though it may have very worthy goals and be something we would approve, it's always good to know that this is really a gathering and a community effort where people get together and make it happen. Just one other quick, while I have the attention of Lathrop, I know that some folks volunteer in a larger capacity in the city. I just wanted to put another, mention this, that I'd love to see something a little more formal. If they give it any thought, that you have such expertise at so many levels in so many different areas that really could be of great benefit to the city of East Hampton, to the citizens. And I know you're doing some, but if there's any more you have to think of, I'd be happy to consult with you.
Thank you for that. I'm listening and I know Patrick is listening.
Thank you. Any other councilor? Councilor Denham?
Just one last question. And I was reminded by Councilor Zera's comments of the trails. So taxpayers are providing these funds through the CPA, et cetera. Do they have, do residents who are not residents of East Hampton, who are not residents of Lathrop, do they have the ability to be able to enjoy that land?
Yes. There is, there are trails. We have a sign at the trailhead which says, "Visitors welcome, dawn to dusk. No hunting, no vehicles beyond this point."
Thank you. Councilor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I was about to bring up a...
Yeah, I was about to bring up a similar thing. There was, I just wanted to, you know, as we're talking about this, when this was initially in CPA, one of the things that was discussed is whether, you know, we should mandate a sign saying, oh, that, you know, there's trails here funded by the CPA, something like that. There was ultimately a decision to not do that. And after thinking about it for a while, I think I do agree with that decision. Because, and I just wanted to say this to get it on the record, because it might come up in a future appropriation about a different property. I think that the conservation of land and helping to fight invasives on conservation-restricted land would be a good thing that I would be inclined to vote for, even if the land was closed, you know, even if there were no trails on it, even if it was just completely a wildlife reserve that was not open to the public. I think that that's how I feel about that. And I'm saying that now because it's entirely possible that, in the time I've been on the council, I don't think a project like this has come up. Most of the open space projects that we talk about are specifically creating sort of amenities for places where the, usually publicly owned places where the public can go and hike and enjoy nature and whatnot. And this is a little bit different than that. And I just want to say that to get it on the record that kind of that's my general thinking on that, is that this sort of conservation activity is good on its own, regardless of whether or not the space itself is really considered to be sort of a public amenity. And if somebody else comes forward with land that maybe is hard to access, but it's in conservation restriction and want to do a similar thing, even if people couldn't largely get to it to hike or enjoy it, I'd be inclined to vote for it if it was good for the local ecosystem. But I just want to say that because, I'm sort of repeating myself, I'm a little sick and foggy, but I just, you know, like, that might come up again. And since this is kind of a little bit of a precedent setting that we're doing here, and among East Hampton, and North Hampton and other communities have done things like this before, but I don't believe that, at least in the six years that I've been here, I don't think we've done this. So I just want to say, I'm for it, but I'd also be for it if it were somewhere else.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let me say that there is no city money going toward trails. The trails at Lathrop are primitive. They are maintained by residents. We actually get out there and hack away the intruding underbrush. And they are not maintained at a standard that can take heavy public use. But what we are doing as part of the grant project is to propose, once a year, a program which will be advertised to the general public that brings people onto our land to see what we're doing about invasives and to learn how they might be able to take some of our lessons to their own land or just be interested in looking at a place that, as one member of the public that I met on the trail one day said, "This is the woods of my childhood." So we are reaching out to the public, but in a way that is consonant with the state of our trails and how they are paid for and maintained.
Any other councillors, before we go to the public? Counselor Smith?
I just want to speak to Counselor Peak's comment about the historical, whether or not this is the first. I'm not sure. Previous term, when I was on city council, we used CPA funds to protect the aquifer by creating a land trust between East Hampton and Southampton and Westfield. So I do believe that we have approved these sorts of funds for exactly the reason that you were talking about. But I wanted to bring it up to see if either our clerk or councillors who were on at that time recall that.
Counselor Derby?
Well, I think, you know, kind of riffing off that just a little bit, I think one of the things about this that is unique with our CPA is the, you know, public-private partnership. We haven't done that before, because that conservation land was public land.
Okay.
So this is a little bit different, and, you know, and I looked at it a little bit. I was like, oh, wow, this is, but I think it's great. I think this is, you know, one question I do have, and I imagine that this has probably been discussed, and I'm sure that you guys are on top of this, is, you know, a lot of times invasives, the way you get rid of them is spraying.
Yes.
And so I just want to, you know, just put it out there to make sure that the things that are sprayed, sometimes those things can be pretty toxic. So just the idea of being mindful around that, if we are in a spot above the aquifer, that what goes on the ground goes down the ground.
Yes.
So, you know, finding that balance, which I'm sure that you've already done. So I just felt like it was worth mentioning, though.
Yes, we will be using, or our contractors will be using, a variety of methods, including cutting and pulling, but also including spray. And when we use, when they use spray, they're all licensed to do this in wetland. We are using Link Fish's outfit, which you surely know, he's a premier person in, has been in the valley for a long time doing this kind of work. That is who our contractor will be for the East Hampton land. We feel very comfortable in his hands. He's very careful. And it's not like they go around and go, shh, no. What happens is that a certain size of plant is sprayed with a backpack sprayer and a nozzle, which has a funnel on it, which just goes plant, and they go plant by plant, 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 plant. We've been using this method with our contractors for ten years on our land. And you can walk into our woods and see a trillium next to an invasive plant that was sprayed. The trillium is fine. They really are very precise. That said, I wish we didn't have to do it. I wish we didn't have to do it. But it is the, it's the best alternative that we can find to keep the wildlife safe in our woods. But thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. Any other councillors for the public? Counselor Peak?
Yeah, just to clarify my point, we certainly have put land into conservation trust like before. This is a case of privately-held conservation land that we are funding the work on invasives on. I don't think we've done anything quite like this. That's all, my point is, is just that I support this, but I do think it sets a bit of a precedent. We might have privately-held land from another, from somewhere else at some point that wants to do a similar thing. And I just think it's, with things like this, it's important to just note that, okay, we are sort of setting a little bit of a precedent on how we want to handle these things. Not that we couldn't change our mind, but it is, I think, just in the interest of fairness, important to note that this is the direction that I think we're choosing to go. And I'm fine with that, I just want to note it.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Counselor Kuzinski?
Thank you. Counselor Peak brings up a good point about what he shared with us. However, I would just also like to say, I think it's our responsibility as councillors to take each individual request and not necessarily look at, consider this a precedent per se, but one, at the time, given the funds that we had available and the projects we have before us, this is our choice today. And that we may very well choose that same program over and over and over again. But I think it's important for everyone who applies for CPA funding, it's not a guarantee. It is something that, it's our responsibility to evaluate each time and each, for every year, for every dollar.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
Counselor Peak, I appreciate the clarification. My focus was more on the use of the word recreation and that there wouldn't be, even if it wasn't recreation. So I was just bringing up an example of a similar one, not regarding who owns the land, but just that it was never for the intention of being used by the public, that's all.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Anyone from the public have any questions, concerns, comments about this application?
Sarah Woodard, 24 Sheldon Avenue. How did the general public, like, we've never heard of this. How would we be more aware of, how would we be aware of things that are happening like this, just as a taxpayer?
Counselor Peak, do you want to answer that?
Oh, sure. I assume you mean, like, how would you be aware that the land that's being conserved is something that you have access to hike on? Or, I'm just not entirely sure I understand the question, I'm sorry.
Can you please repeat the question again?
How does the public know about this? Like, where would we find information about it? I never knew we had access to this or that it existed.
About the money, about the land?
About the land. Or about this, I mean, the proposal I'm sure is on the agenda, but even the land, how would we know that this was even a thing that's available to the public?
Yeah. Well, I think that that's sort of the area where this was discussed a little bit in CPA was because of that, about, you know, the idea that, you know, while Lathrop does allow individuals to hike on their land, you know, from dawn to dusk, it's not necessarily something that's heavily advertised. I was not aware of that, for instance. And I think some of the people who live in the neighborhood were aware of it, but I don't, so I wasn't. And so there was sort of this question about public good and what was the public good? And I guess my point of my sort of long-winded thing that I said earlier was just that I think that the conservation of, you know, vulnerable land and wildlife is a public good in and of itself, regardless of what policy Lathrop takes towards public access of their lands. And that I ultimately would probably support something like this, even if it was on land that was not open to the public, provided that it had a credible, you know, chance of preserving a large amount of wildlife. But that's my opinion, and somebody else could feel differently about it.
That be an answer to your question? Yeah?
I will speak to that, though, if I may.
This once-a-year public program that we are proposing as part of the grant will be advertised to the general public. So in all the avenues that we can think of, if you're on the mailing list for Pascomic, for Kestrel, for the city, for every place, we will put it there. And so actually, what should happen is that this is private land. It is not our mission to maintain a public trail. But we want people to know about this project. And we want them to know that the cities and Kestrel have supported this project. And so we're trying to focus our attention on the people who will find out about what is special about this land, which is the work that we have done on invasives. It's not the trail, the public trail, where you take your kids on a Sunday afternoon, but it is the trail where you will come to learn about our work.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone participating remote? They want to say something? Nobody else? Counselor Peak?
All right. I'll make this request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, thirty-three thousand fifty-one dollars, to be transferred from CPA Reserve for Open Space, thirty-three thousand fifty-one dollars, to be transferred to Lathrop Invasive Plant Removal, thirty-three thousand fifty-one dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. The funding would be used to control invasive plants and remove existing invasive shrubs on Lathrop community land. Also included is an expectation that Lathrop will provide education to the public about native invasive plants and how landowners can support native wildlife. Lathrop is expected to provide quarterly reports and in-person updates twice a year.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the CPA supplemental appropriation, thirty-three thousand fifty-one dollars. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Omar Gomez, JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
Owen Zarrett?
Upstate.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
And Salem Gerby?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearings. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
Owen Zarrett?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Gerby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye. Motion passes, public hearing is officially closed. Counselor Sarit?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in the interest of the public members that are still here to hear the resolutions, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the city council rules as it pertains to order of business to allow the resolutions to be discussed at this time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rule of the agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
Owen Zarrett?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Gerby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Motion passes. Counselor Denham, the resolution about the MCAS.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are there any concerns about?
No, but we're going to vote now for the public?
Yep, no, I just want to make sure that everyone was okay with. So, thank you, Mr. President. So President Gomez and I presented the resolution for, in support of Ballot Measure Two, as was previously mentioned. Massachusetts is only one of eight states in the country that still continues to have ties towards standardized tests in relation to graduation. There was a lot spoken to this. I don't want to be repetitive, but I do want to talk to my own personal experience in regards to the impact on individuals. While I was not a resident, I did not live, I did not go to high school in Massachusetts. I grew up in Oregon. We did not have, at that time, an MCAS test. I was the first person in my family to go to school. I was not a test taker, and I spent a lot of time at a community college because of my fear around SATs. And that had tremendous impact on my confidence, as well as my ability to advance. I did not believe that I could be successful because I could not score enough, a high enough test, a high enough number on this particular test. So I spent four years at a community college, not believing in myself, not knowing how to transfer to a four-year school, not believing that I was smart enough to be able to do that, all because of a number that I had got. And I also, as a first-generation student, did not have family members who could provide me with guidance to say, hey, you should study for this test. At the same time, I chose graduate schools, graduate experiences that did not require the GRE, because I did not want to be able, I did not want to be defined by a particular number that would determine my success. I have two master's degrees, I have a bachelor's degree, I have a doctorate. And I have done all, and had all of that success because I actually chose not to engage in standardized tests, because I knew that I would not be successful. I knew that that would have a lasting impact on how I saw myself in the world. And so, you know, I worked with President Gomez on this specifically because I know that this has a negative impact on students' standardized tests. And specifically, as a white woman, I understand the impact that this has on people of color. I recognize that this, the impact that this has on special needs. And certainly, as someone who grew up in poverty, I recognize the impact that this has on disadvantaged young people. And so that's why I'm presenting with, well, I'm presenting this resolution, and I'm sure President Gomez can speak to his own initiative to. can speak to his own, um, uh, initiative to, to put this forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Denham. Uh, Counselor Riley?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, yes, I just wanted to take a, a couple of moments, um, just to share some thoughts about the, uh, the MCAS and my own journey. Um, so, you know, in the past, um, you know, during resolutions or, um, you know, talking about issues before the city, I've talked a great deal about my journey with public education, language barriers, and extreme poverty. Um, but I rarely talk about the totality of my accomplishments in higher education or my career. And, um, so I wanted to take a moment just to kind of cover some of the highlights. Um, so I have a bachelor's degree in workplace diversity and inclusion with greatest distinctions from the Commonwealth Honors College at UMass Amherst. I have a master's in education from the University of Illinois and a master's in public policy and administration from UMass Amherst. Um, in that, uh, graduate program, I also served as a graduate student senator and as a member of the task force that created flexible learning at UMass, allowing students to learn online. My degrees make me qualified to work as an intergovernmental relations researcher for federal agencies and state and local governments. It makes me qualified to run a city where I vet and approve hundreds of people to run many of our community's boards, committees, and commissions, as well as being a local government advisor to the governor of Massachusetts. I also serve on the Board of Directors of the Massachusetts Municipal Association and for tapestry health, two things that I'm incredibly proud of. But more importantly, my degrees make me qualified to be a high school teacher. And I bring this up not to gloat about my experiences or my accolades, but to say that in no college course did I ever take a rote memorization exam to get these degrees. Every single course required demonstrating aptitude in other ways such as public speaking, writing, or creative projects. And if I did have to take exams, I would have never graduated with a bachelor's degree and nothing in my professional life would have ever been possible. As a child raised in a neighboring state, I never had to take the MCAS, yet my credentials give me access to the most powerful positions in Massachusetts. So when the question of the MCAS comes up, I pause and I ask myself this simple question. Why is a fifteen-year-old in Massachusetts held to a higher standard than me? Is it fair that someone from another state can move to Massachusetts and gain access to its higher education institutions and not be required to take one of these exams to succeed? Why would the state of Massachusetts do that to its own children but not require the children of other states to do the same? Ever since I learned of the MCAS back in two thousand and five, it always gave me the heebie-jeebies because it reminded me of my poverty and my disenfranchisement in society. If I were born just a hundred miles to the south, I would probably still be locked out of society today. And it also puts a pit in my stomach to realize that there are kids just like me in the city that I run who can never become someone like me simply because a test stands in their way. So I'm not going to tell the public how to vote in November, but when it comes to this resolution, I'm a very firm yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riley. Any other counselors? Counselor Zaret?
Well, although I would defer to you, it's okay. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to respect your, your sponsorship. Um, I didn't grow up in Massachusetts either, and so when I moved here and I met parents whose kids were taking the MCAS, I had no idea what this was. Um, but certainly, uh, I could tell from their feelings around the test and certainly their students' feeling around the test that MCAS is just another four-letter word. Um, and, uh, having a child now in high school and certainly having friends and associates whose children have gone through high school in the Commonwealth, it seems like just one extra stressor in what's become a more and more stressful experience, um, not just academically but socially. And I don't understand, especially when we have a, a four years of academia, uh, within high school, that should be both a, a measure of and a support network to foster our children's education, why we have to, uh, basically place something on them that, um, whether they're having a bad day or a bad week or a bad year or to other people's examples aren't, don't do well at standardized tests or fall into a group that for a variety of biases, these tests certainly are already pitted against them. It just doesn't make sense. Um, and if we want to look for metrics to determine how well our schools and our school districts are doing, I'm sure there's lots of other ways that we can figure it out. Um, and so I appreciate both the fact that this is on the ballot and obviously my colleagues bringing it forward and, um, and obviously we'll, we'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor Zaret. Uh, Counselor Derby?
So, um, you know, Massachusetts was recently given some credit for being the best public school system in the country. And that accolade, I think, is, uh, in spite of MCAS, not because of it. Um, as a teacher, a high school teacher, um, you know, I have a unique perspective on this because I see it every day. Our students are feeling more anxious than I've ever seen them in my twenty years of being at Northampton High School. Um, and when it comes for MCAS time, it's the, the air in the building changes and you can feel it. And, you know, I, I, like, all the things that have been said are amazing and, you know, I appreciate that. I'll, I'll, I'll make this quick and I think that, you know, it's simple. Can you imagine what we could do with thirty million dollars a year in term, in terms of like putting teachers in buildings? Like, this costs thirty million dollars a year. And we're paying a company from like Texas. I think it's like the connections with like Jordan Bush. Like, when we started doing this, it was like gross then. It's even more gross now that we're still doing this and we know all that. So I can't wait for this to be lifted. Obviously, I will be voting yes.
Thank you, there. Counselor Derby. Any other counselors? Counselor Kozinski?
I wasn't sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wow, what a breadth of knowledge from the counselor sitting here who's spoken from the folks who came here to speak to us. The vignettes I heard tonight about the person who, uh, dropped out, the people who drop out after tenth grade, not because they can't succeed under the rest of the program that occurs in school, not that they couldn't benefit by someone, teachers focused on that, those areas that help them to learn. But by, uh, a focus that, that helps them to succeed. It sounds to me, I heard, uh, uh, Counselor Zaret say, teaching to a higher standard. Is it really teaching to a higher standard? Seems to me almost the opposite. This is teaching to a lesser standard. If the normal teaching process is a good evaluation tool with grades, with graduation requirements, and this program keeps folks from graduating, from participating, from succeeding, and it takes some really extraordinary effort to stay in school and make the achievements that Counselor Denham has spoken about and Counselor Riley has spoken about, despite their inability, they said, to succeed on standardized testing. And the fear and the anxiety that it causes, I think there may be a role for MCAS. It may be in helping teachers to understand what seems to be working at any given time, what techniques they have, but certainly not as an evaluative tool where there's graduation requirements involved. Uh, I'll be voting.
Thank you, Counselor Kozinski. Any other counselors? I'm gonna say a few words before we, we take the mo, I'll take the motion to, for the resolution. Y lo voy a decir en español. Qué difícil sería que todo lo que estamos aquí en este, en este salón, tomará un examen en español a ver quién lo pasaría. Sería muy pocos. Tal vez yo sería el único. It's really hard to understand, right? Really hard. Can you imagine the people who speak my same, the same language that I speak just a few seconds ago, how to pass the test? How are we gonna measure their intelligence, comprehensive? It's not fair. It's not fair for my community. It's not fair for disadvantaged kids. It's not fair. That money, the Counselor Derby just talked, the thirty millions, should go to the students, not to the pocket of the millionaires. I think it's that simple. We have to start thinking more about the kids and the teachers and stop spending money in places that we're not going anywhere. And he's starting Spanish because September fif, September fifteen, we're gonna start the Hispanic heritage month. And if you just want to remind everybody, November fifth, that this question is gonna be there. Help our community. We need, we need you. We can be better, but will you vote? Of course, I'm gonna say yes in this resolution, right? But of course, I'm gonna encourage everybody to November fifth to say yes in question two. Any other counselors before we take the motion? Counselor Denham?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time. I, I, I've heard what members in the community said, and I just want to acknowledge my, um, my own lens. Um, and I wonder if I can make an amendment to this, um, where in the line I say, uh, have, or we say, have become the most effective racist, classist, and I would like to add the word ableist weapon, because we discuss special needs. Um, and following that, uh, objectively degrade black, brown, economically disadvantaged, and special needs.
Counselor Denham, if you have that on writing, would be the best for the,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
for our clerk. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, uh, read the resolution as a motion. And, um, for, for the discussion, you have to make the amendments for the document.
I'm wondering if this is the appropriate time. So this is in the form of a motion, resolution calling for passage of question two to replace the MCAS graduation requirement. The East Hampton City Council is deeply committed to the success and well-being of all our students as well as respecting the depth of experience and knowledge of our teachers. Additionally, we recognize the limitations and negative impact that high-stakes standardized tests have on both students and teachers. Furthermore, we are fully aware that standardized tests like the MCAS have become the most effective racist and classist weapon ever devised, to objectively degrade black, brown, and economically disadvantaged, disadvantaged students, and legally exclude their bright minds from institutions of higher education. Whereas access to a high-quality publicly-funded education is a guaranteed right written into the Massachusetts Constitution, and whereas the goal of public education is to teach students essential foundational skills such as reading, writing, and arithmetic, and to develop critical thinkers, engaged citizens, and lifelong learners. And whereas the bedrock of the Commonwealth's world-class public education system is strong statewide standards that are uniform throughout our public schools, and whereas the MCAS is significantly limited in its ability to accurately and effectively measure whether students are meeting the Commonwealth's standards and developing the skills they need to thrive after high school. And whereas the most effective measures of whether students are meeting our strong statewide standards and developing the skills they need to succeed in college, the workforce, and beyond, are educator-led assessments such as projects, papers, tests, and group activities that are conducted throughout the school year. And whereas the punitive use of MCAS as a high school graduation requirement has restricted curriculum and shifted the focus of education in our public schools towards meeting a test score instead of fostering an environment of creativity, critical thinking, and real teaching and learning to help students realize their full potential. And whereas pediatricians, researchers, and school counselors have warned of the severe impact of high-stakes testing like the MCAS, graduation requirements on students' mental health and well-being, and whereas standardized test requirements notoriously stack the deck against students of color, ESL students, and those with learning disabilities. And whereas using MCAS testing as a high school graduation requirement has prevented or delayed thousands of students from earning a diploma, thereby interrupting or derailing education or career plans, with especially harmful impacts on low-income students, students with disabilities, students of color, and students for whom English is their second language. And therefore, let it be resolved that the East Hampton City Council supports passage of question two to replace the MCAS graduation requirements, requirement, and require instead that districts certify that students have satisfactorily completed coursework demonstrating mastery of the skills and knowledge required by the Commonwealth's strong statewide standards in order to graduate.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution calling a passage of question two to replace the MCAS graduation requirement. Any further discussion? Counselor Denham?
Yes. So I just, if, if people want to add this, uh, I am just suggesting that, uh, for the, in the sentence, furthermore, we are fully aware that standardized tests like the MCAS have become the most effective racist, classist, and ableist weapon ever devised to objectively degrade black, brown, economically disadvantaged, and special needs students, ever devised to object, uh, and legally exclude their bright minds from institutions of higher education.
Second.
Do you need all writing now?
I can write it. Yeah, I got it. I just, the ableist, I don't know. Uh, so racist, classist, and ableist weapon ever devised?
Don't worry, we, we, she will pass it to you.
Yeah, you're gonna write it down.
Yeah. I have, um, motion and a second to amend this document. Any further discussion? Barbara? This is for the amendment.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Uh, the amendment passed. Now, we have a motion and a second for the original document with the amendment. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. Counselor Kozinski, can we do the other resolution at the end or?
No, we have somebody waiting.
Let's do it now. Counselor Kozinski?
Uh, the proposal, proposed resolution is, uh, was well discussed by, uh, Mr. Donnelly, who had, uh, spoken to us earlier. I think he covered much, I think the resolution itself covers much of the issues that helped us to understand the reasons why this is important, not only for the trail itself, but for East Hampton, and how it will benefit us and the Commonwealth as a whole. Uh, so I would like to be able to read the resolution, if I may. In the City Council, September four, upon the recommendation of James JP Kozinski, a resolution in support of finishing the Mass Central Rail Trail. Whereas this body has deliberated and adopted legislation to increase safety on our public ways by making them more accessible, walkable, and cyclable. Whereas the City of East Hampton has expanded its shared use path, the Manhan Rail Trail, to connect to the Mass Central Rail Trail to further facilitate access to this path and safe transportation for non-motor vehicle travel. And whereas the completion of the Mass Central Rail Trail is consistent with these efforts and that completing this one-hundred-and-four-mile shared-use path will enhance non-motor vehicle access to our city and will solidify East Hampton's position as one of the region's growing destinations for business, arts, entertainment, and general enjoyment. And whereas, East Hampton recognizes the importance of community initiatives that contribute to the well-being and prosperity of our residents. And whereas, the Mass Central Rail Trail Coalition, under the guidance of the Norwattic Network, has embarked on a vital project to push for the completion of the entire Mass Central Rail Trail from Boston, all the way through North, to Northampton, Massachusetts. Sixty miles are currently open. Sixty miles are currently open, with ninety-four point five miles protected, and many miles under construction. Northampton's portion is complete, but gaps start in Belchertown to the east. And whereas the Mass Central Rail Trail Coalition's mission aligns with our city's strategic priorities, particularly in promoting health, health and safety of our citizens. Fostering economic development and addressing key community objectives for the overall well-being of our citizens. And whereas, the completion of the Mass Central Rail Trail project mitigates traffic, facilitates bike-to-school programs, community health and safety, economic development, increased tourism, climate resiliency, and historic education opportunities, all of which resonate with our city's values and goals. And whereas the MCRT Coalition has demonstrated a commitment to fostering partnerships, collaborating with the entities such as the Mass DOT, the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation, Mass Trails, and the Massachusetts Office of Outdoor Recreation. And whereas, we acknowledge the desirability of living in proximity to completed rail trails, and recognize the project's potential to provide safe and enticing outdoor opportunities for our residents of all ages and abilities. And whereas, completion of the Mass Central Rail Trail project contributes to the economic development in isolated rural communities and positions of our city located at the west end of the trail as an attractive destination for national and international bicycling and walking tourists. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of East Hampton City Council recognizes and stands by the more than twenty years of planning by our elected and appointed officials that completion of the MCRT is consistent with a safer, greener, and more welcoming community. And be it further resolved that this completion of the Mass Central Rail Trail project aligns seamlessly with our city's vision for a thriving and interconnected community, creating a lasting legacy for future generations. And be it further resolved that the administrative assistant to the City Council shall send a copy of this resolution to Mayor La Cola Chappelle, Mass DOT, Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation, Massachusetts Outdoor Office of, Office of Outdoor Recreation, the Massachusetts Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, Mass President of the Senate, Karen Spilka, State Representative Dan Carey, State Senator John Velas, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and the Daily Hampshire Gazette, and other local media outlets.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the resolution in support of the finishing the Mass Central Trail, Rail Trail. Any further discussion? Counselor Derby?
Yeah. I love this, you know, as someone who commits to work every day on the rail trail, someone who committed here on the rail trail. I, you know me, as soon as this goes to Boston, you know where I'm gonna be riding my bike. So, and, and, you know, I think that this is great. The only thing I'm upset about is that I didn't bring it forward. I had a note in my thing, and I was, and I, you beat me too, JP, so good for you. But I think this is absolutely critical for so many reasons, from, you know, health and, and well-being of, of our citizens, to the environment, and to, you know, just making our community more accessible to bikers, walkers, and people that are spending time outside, I think this is critical. I, I would just, you know, add one thing, which is there are still some other bike path spurs that we can't forget. You know, we need to get to, to Westfield, and, and those are critical too, but this one is amazingly important, and so I wholeheartedly support this.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Kozinski?
Mr. President, I just wanted to also say that, from East Hampton to Boston, we think of, from East Hampton to Boston, from East Hampton, but this is not just from East Hampton to Boston, this is from Boston to East Hampton. And all the places along the way have the opportunity to come to our section of the community and to our community. And once the trail is completed between Northampton and New Haven, that whole region will be wide open, and that will happen. We need to do our part today to help this along.
Thank you, any other counselor, Counselor Sarret?
Yeah, I mean, this is a very well-written resolution, so I think you summed it all up. I mean, I would echo what Counselor Derby said, that one of the things I love certainly in the micro is being able to get on the main artery of the Manhan Rail Trail in East Hampton and get to pretty much any business I want, although I wish we had better bike lanes on our new streets, but that's a digression. But, but then for the macro, to know that if I wanted to, I could ride basically from East Hampton all the way to Amherst, and hopefully with completion of this trail system beyond. And I think about how much these trails have clearly fostered economic development. You see it here in East Hampton, that I think that the success along certainly the bike path, the back of the mills, all of those, all of those businesses in the back of the mills facing the bike paths absolutely benefit from having that, that throughway, that artery for both pedestrians, bikes, and other vehicles that are allowed there per our ordinance to, to travel there. The other thing I'll say too, apropos of the, the, um, the, uh, public hearing earlier is that as we start discussing the importance of conservation and native plant preservation and pollinator preservation, is that these offer a perfect symbiosis for a linear park. I think we all refer to the Manhan Rail Trail that way. But, um, these, these throughways and other places are basically seen as a perfect opportunity to take the, the green swaths on the side and plant native plants there. And then what do you do, what, what happens there is in an era where, where, where invertebrate migration is threatened constantly because they don't have anywhere to land, and the, the availability of native plant space is threatened, you're basically have the opportunity to build a pollinator pathway all the way across the state and then beyond, hopefully, to, to Connecticut as well. So it's something to think about when we talk about dollars and how we're spending it to include in these projects as well. And I know that's something the BS Committee is doing here, so thanks for bringing that forward, and looking forward to biking to Boston someday.
Thank you, Counselor Sarret, anyone else? Barbara?
Oh, I thought you were looking for a comment, right?
I mean, you wanna make a comment?
Uh, Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Yes.
JP Kozinski? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Tamara Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, thank you, Counselor Kozinski. Communication from elected official supporters in committee, any council have, any communication, Counselor Sarret?
Just really quickly, Mr. President, the River Roads Festival is happening this weekend. It is a, it is a ticket, a ticketed event at Millside Park. Um, just to let the, the public know, um, there will not be Milpon Live this year, and that has to do with a loss of sponsors. But, uh, the River Roads Festival, um, is available. I think they're probably still looking for volunteers, so that may be an opportunity to be able to participate in the festival without buying a ticket. Um, and then for, I think, the fifth year, we're partnering with the Connecticut River Conservancy to do a cleanup the next day from nine AM till the twelve. I know some of the artists will be getting up bright and early to participate with that. I just also wanted to acknowledge next, I heard now next Thursday, the Parks and Rec Committee is meeting, I think in these chambers at six PM. Um, as all of you know, there's been a very long and arduous discussion about both requests to build a dog park, which was once a city council agenda item, as well as a skate park, which was brought forward by an independent group of volunteers. Those, the dog park discussion's been going on for six years, the skate park discussion for about five. It's, they've both had a lot of twists and turns, but there's been a lot of perseverance, and there's been, I think that's been moved forward both by the goodwill and enthusiasm of independent groups like the Dog Park Committee and the Skate Park Committee. But we've had a lot of stakeholders here in, within the city government, and certainly within the city council as well, who have supported this. I particularly wanna thank Counselor Denham, because I know she's been involved with these projects, and I think her participation has certainly helped move these along, and thank you as well, Mr. President. I know that you've had a few things to say as well about in favor of these. There was a very, I think, promising conversation about a dog park in Nahtuck Park, and I feel that the Parks Commission acted in very good faith and asked very good questions, and I think we're moving in a good direction there. And the skate park will be presenting designs for Millside Park next Thursday, and I encourage members of the public and the council to, to come and attend and speak, to give your opinion. Obviously, I'd like you to support it, but I'd also just like you to give your opinion. There's been vast buy-in from stakeholders as, who own businesses and buildings in the mills. And there is, I know that Counselor Derby could probably speak to, there's historical precedence for a skate park there. And I think as we talk about using space that's available to us and activating space that we already have, again, in the same breath as we're talking about the River Roads Festival, Millside Park is an exceptional opportunity for us to really activate that space, not just with the skate park, but really looking at how we can really open up that park for more use as well, especially as it is a gateway to the city along the bike path. Thank you, Counselor Kozinski. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Sarret, any other communication from counselors, Counselor Smith?
As you know, I represent Precinct Five, and this is the precinct where Go Net Speed Fiber has been being laid down in the neighborhood. I have received several complaints from residents within my precinct. Everything from having their streets not being recorded as official streets within our, within our city, as well as having tar from paving being left on lawns to having crabgrass as the, the replanted grass from the company. On July fifteenth, Counselor Denham and I had contacted Greg Nuttlemann to ask about any progress with the, with the roads that were not considered official roads on our city census. And at the time, I was told by Greg Nuttlemann that the, because Go Net Speed was a private company, we would eventually be getting to making sure that the roads were listed as part of the public infrastructure. However, that would not have any impact on Go Net Speed. And so I wanted to bring this up as an issue, because my precinct continually is having this as an issue, and I just want more clarification about who they can contact if they're having these problems, what evidence they should be collecting of, um, from things happening on their property, and whether or not the city will have an official dialogue with the company, because this has been a massive, a lot of problems happening. And this is within one precinct, and it will be moving to the other precincts in the city, and so this will be replicated in multiple neighborhoods.
Thank you, Counselor Smith, any other counselor, Counselor Kozinski?
May I ask Counselor Smith a question?
For clarification, just, just be careful, because it's not on the agenda. Deliberation with this will be open middle of violation.
Could you elaborate on the, the importance of the streets not being official streets, and what impact, if any, that means?
For clarifications sake, Go Net Speed had contacted residents on one of the roads within the Plains neighborhood, and said that that street was not included on our official city census. This was an error that happened fifty years ago, and was just never included on the census. The residents were told that they would not have the option for fiber optics coming through their yard and would not have an access to the internet unless the City of East Hampton created the streets to be officially included. And so that's, that's why, it's an error that was on the book from, you know, half a century ago, that is now dictating this company's policy as to whether or not they will go through that land. Does that answer your question?
That clarifies the impact that not being a city street means to people.
Right, right.
I also wanted to toss in that.
To the same topic, or?
Same subject.
Okay.
If I may.
Yep.
Crabgrass, when there isn't crabgrass in the, in, in the adjacent area, I, I would think that the company would, would, would wanna be, would need to be more, and our laws ought to be more consistent with replacing to like kind the disruptions that companies do from time to time. So I wanted to say that in our neighborhood, I've noticed that it hasn't been done, and I'd like to lodge that as a formal complaint.
Thank you, any other counselors? Thank you, um, major's communication, Madam Mayor? Wait, she.
Just signed off.
Just wait, I'll say, she's back. She's back.
My apologies, I, I keep hitting the wrong red button. Uh, no communications, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any communications, uh, Counselor Derby?
I have a couple, um, I just wanted to let people know that, um, East Hampton is now recruiting senior tax workoff candidates. And so that process is happening, and you can contact Cynthia, um, the Director of Council and Agent. And I believe it closes September thirtieth. So that's something that if people are interested in that, they should know. There's two other things, I, I just wanna let people know that there's a, um, a mini MBA series for business owners where they can get mentored. And so that's another thing that's happening in the city. And you can contact Lindsay in the mayor's office to find out more about that executive leadership training. So this is part of, I believe it's a grant that we are part of. And then finally, the East Hampton Fire Department is partnering with Bay State Health for a blood drive. Um, and so let me just give you the date on that, I believe it is September twenty-fourth at the East Hampton Fire Station at thirty-two Patient Ave. And that is to get more blood in a time of blood shortage.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Report, report of standing committees, Finance, Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, we met last week to discuss the appropriation that we discussed in public hearing today. Uh, we also started discussing, um, the review of salaries and stipends for elected and appointed officials. And so, uh, I think we're going to meet at our regularly scheduled time, which would be, uh, Wednesday, the eleventh at five-thirty. And at that time, uh, we will discuss, we'll continue to discuss that, as well as discussing, the matter that the mayor brought to us last council meeting about, um, uh, the, the mayor wanted to discuss the audit, so I think we'll do that as well. When it comes to the salaries and stipends, I wanted to just put a, um, kind of a broad request out to the council, which is to kind of ask, uh, if you have any thoughts to, to sort of share them, but also to kind of broadly ask, like, sort of what, what, what we, if we're going to do anything to change our salaries or stipends, kind of what, uh, what are we hoping to achieve through that? Because I think that's sort of the place where we've run into, I feel maybe, uh, sometimes not really knowing where, what to go is, you know, in the past, we had said, oh, well, we wanna raise them because we wanna make this position more attractive to a broader group of people, for instance. So that, that's like a goal, and then we can talk about, okay, what, what do you, what do we need for that? So, um, it, you know, is the issue, do we wanna examine equity with other communities? Or is that kind of pointless, because they all have different tax bases and economic situations? Or do we wanna, um, you know, just, just, uh, look at, uh, do we wanna put any particular time on a certain group? I guess that, that's the thing, uh, we're gonna be discussing it, so if any, um, if people wanna come and speak, or if they wanna write anything to me, that's fine. to come and speak, or if they want to write anything to me, that's fine. Barring anything, I think there's a pretty good chance that we might just talk about building something into account for inflation and maybe go over some of the stipends and call it a day. So if that's fine with you, then great, but I just, I don't think I've gotten a lot of feedback from the council, or, or other than one person from one committee, from, from a lot of the appointed positions either. So if you have any thoughts on this, I'd like to hear them, and that concludes.
That conclude?
Yes.
Thank you. Police safety, Consul Sarat?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have not met since our last meeting. We will be meeting next Tuesday, the 10th, at 6:00 PM in Room One. At that time, we will be reviewing the, the traffic rules and order language, we'll start to get into that. And there is a roadway infrastructure and pedestrian safety issue that was brought to my attention from some residents on West Street, so we'll be discussing that as well. I've notified them we'll be meeting, so they can come for public speak, and certainly that's an open-ended item, so any issues along those lines around the city, people should feel free to both contact your counselors, but also to come to meetings to speak about that. That concludes.
Thank you, Consul. Appointments, Consul Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee has not met since our last meeting. We do have a meeting scheduled for September 9th, which is, I believe that's Monday, yes, Monday, September 9th, and that will be in Conference Room, is it?
Number Two.
Can you just tell me what it says on the wall there? It's at the meeting room behind City Council Chambers.
Small conference room.
Number Two.
Conference Room Two.
Let's go to number two.
Conference Room Two.
Thank you. Yeah, room number two.
And that concludes.
Thank you, Consul. No, not there. Ordinance, Consul Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. We last met on August 20th, and we addressed the items on the agenda. First, to address the sign ordinance, as was presented in the last agenda packet, we discussed the striking language from Section 10.096B. The part that includes election signs shall be displayed for a period of not more than 90 days prior to an election and shall be removed within seven days after the completion of the election. So we, three to zero, we voted to strike that language because this is a violation of First Amendment rights, so it is considered political speech for people to be able to have political signs up on. And so what would remain is the political signs are allowed at any time of the year, no permit is required. And so it's pretty straightforward, there wasn't a lot of discussion on the matter, but this is, this is what the committee decided on. I don't know if there's other comments.
What?
Ordinance and planning. Yep, both. Back to ordinance and planning. So we would, I guess, like to amend the sign ordinance, Section 10.096B regarding temporary signs, to include that amendment, and to send that to the Planning Committee.
As a motion.
Second.
Second.
Can you please repeat the motion, please?
Sure. So we, as amended, sign ordinance, Section 10.096, to strike the section that I included and leave political signs are allowed at any time of the year, no permit is required, and send it to the Planning Committee.
Sorry. To ordinance and the Planning Board.
Yes, so back to ordinance and the Planning Committee, to the Planning Committee and then back to ordinance.
Yes. We have a motion and a second for these items. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consul Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the other item on the agenda in this week's packet, after deliberation with our associate planner, Dylan Maxfield, who had discussions with city engineer and our interim building commissioner, we had suggested amending Section 8.52B regarding language of verification by a surveyor to include additional language around that, but surveyor appears in different places throughout the zoning ordinances, and so what they recommended was that adding the following definition in zoning ordinance, Section 2.1, definitions, which would include surveyor, a surveyor registered in Massachusetts by the Board of Registration of Professional Engineers and Land Surveyors with an up-to-date license. And so what the committee voted, three to zero, to bring that back to council, to amend Section 2.1, as well as sending it to the Planning Committee, and then back to the Ordinance Committee. And that's in the form of a motion.
I have a motion and a seconds for these items. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak. Tom Peak.
Aye, sorry.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Motion passes. Consul Denham?
Yeah, and also just to acknowledge both of those, for the, for the sake of the community, we are now on the clock to have this back and vote it on within 60 days, I believe. Yep, so just to acknowledge that. The last item was a request for temporary moratorium on use of sewage sludge fertilizer in East Hampton. We had a brief discussion about that. The Agricultural Commission has put together some research regarding sewage sludge, as well as PFAS, and we are giving them time to be able to have that discussion amongst themselves, and so we want to be able to try to allow, give them the opportunity to prioritize that for themselves in terms of the impact that this would have on local farms. And so we want to be able to give them the, the space to be able to have that conversation, and then bring it back and have that conversation with all of us to discuss the impact, but we want to give them the opportunity to have that conversation first. And so I will be reaching out to their committee to engage them in a conversation of kind of where they are with that particular research, and that's everything that the Ordinance Committee has to offer council this evening.
Thank you, Consul Denham. Propri, Consul Sarat?
We've incredibly full agenda here. No, no report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Consul. Rules and Government Relations, Consul Kozinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Government Relations Committee would like to meet on Wednesday, the 11th. Would 6:15 be a, a good time rather than, since you have finance that will be coming up that's particularly important? Is it, and maybe the clerk would assign a room, and so that would, would be announced?
Who else is meeting on the 11th?
Five minutes.
Oh, 5:30, so 6:15?
Yep, 6:15, at a, at a place to be determined. I know that with all the items on the agenda would be available for discussion, but I think there will be particular discussion on Rule C, the introduction of council business with some ideas on perhaps even a format to introduce business. So stay tuned.
Thank you, Consul. Thank you. New business, Consul Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three mayoral appointments, and I would move these three to Appointment Committee. Yoshi Byrd, Affordable and Fair Housing Committee, 1231, 2024. Charles Canberra, Veterans Council, 1231, 2026. And Timothy Gresso, ZBA, 1231, 2026. A form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to send those three appointments to the Appointments Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Connie Denham. Salem Derby.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you, everybody.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.